Buenos días, bienvenidos a todos. Gracias por estar con nosotros. Gracias, señor presidente, señor Cardenas, Grum, Mr. Kowski, sign. A nosotros concejales en el rededor de piso, pues de pasar a la sala presa, a la reunión. Gracias.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2003. Yes, the council recess is over, and the council goes back at work. City Council meeting every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public enabled to attend council meetings, we can do you live on your cable station, Channel 35. You can use live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Via telefónica. Madam Clerk, please call the hall. Secretary, municipal, Tom Menlist, Cardenas, Garcia, Grohan, Mr. Kowski, Ray Smith, Perry, Ray, Son, Lalo, Ragosa, Wyss, Sign, Pedia, these groups present. Thank you very much. Colleagues, being the first meeting of the week as customer, we do have our flag salute. Let me ask Councilmember Garcia. Please stand. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Welcome back, everybody. Bienvenidos a todos de nuevo. Ponse su mano en el corazón. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Madam Clerk, for instance, the municipal. Approval of the minutes. The provision of the laws under the laws. Se llevan a cabo. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Resolutions compatible for approbation. And Ms. Han seconds. Se llevan a cabo. Before beginning the regular agenda, there was a request to continue item number 10 for the concejal, La Grue, for two weeks. This will be held until December 16. Petition for the issue number 10 for two weeks. No objection. Item 10 is continued. This issue is replaced. On the regular agenda. Items noticed for public hearing. Item number 1 is the street lighting district. And the Bureau of Street Lighting has requested that matter be continued one week, which would be September 9th. Se apie do que se ha plazado hasta el día. Item number 1, also without objection. Sin protestas se llevan a cabo. Items 2 through 5 are also public hearing items. They are confirmation of street lighting assessments. There are confirmances on the files. Do wish to hold those for 12 council members. Let's hold those. Estos se miran pendiente porque esperamos a que se presenten 10 miembros. Item 6 through 9 are also public hearing items. And council should open the hearing and continue the hearing until September 23rd for the results. The 23 of September para los resultados de la balota. Proposition 28. I no tengo petición de parte del público para hablar con el concejal municipal sobre estos asuntos. Por lo tanto, la audiencia pública se abre y se cierra sin protesta. Este asunto será aplazado 23 de septiembre entre tres semanas. Items for which public hearings have been held. Items 11 through 21. Item 11 has two reports on the file, and also that is an ordinance. Do wish to hold item number 11 on the desk. Let's hold item 11 on the desk. We do await 12 members today. On the balance of the lines of items 12 through 21. El día de hoy, pero el resto, 12, 21. Do you see what I'm saying? Any requests for specials? Petition for a special. Any requests for specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll. Items 12 through 21. Please close the roll. Y tabule ese conteo. 11 eyes. Those are approved. These have been proven. Mr. Garcia. Item 12 for Mr. Ludlow, please. Sure, colleagues, motion for reconsideration of item number 12. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Y tabule ese conteo. We can continue that. Sorry. 11 eyes. Item 12 is reconsidered, and we'll call that special. Just to continue it for a week. Okay, Mr. Ludlow's request. Petition for item 12. Placer asunto número 11. No objection. Item 12 is continued. This is replaced. That would be September 9th, the new hearing date. 9 de septiembre es la nueva fecha. Next items, please. Items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 22 through 107, and 10 votes are required for consideration of those items. Okay, without objection, these items are before us today. Items 22 through 107. I do have one card and item 107. Let's call that special. Any specials by council members? Mr. Smith. 37, please. Item 37 called special by Mr. Smith. Any other specials? Mr. LaBonge.
Yes, could we receive and file? Number 51 and 81. This was a memorial for Bob Hope, which took place and all went well. But we receive and file those?
Item 51 and 81.
93 special. And 93 called special. And 101 special.
Mr. LaBonge. And 101, like the freeway, Mr. LaBonge? Items 93 and 101 called special by Mr. LaBonge. And he also moves to receive a file item 51 and 81. Any other specials? 95 for Mr. Ludlow, please. 95 called special for Mr. Ludlow. Item 85 called special for Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials?
And I missed 13, special for Mr. Toberman. I'm sorry, I first day of school.
We'll take a motion for reconsideration in just a second. Items 22 through 107, with the exception of the items called special. We don't have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we're shutting the public hearings open and close on the items remaining before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Y tabule ese conteo. 12 eyes. Those are approved. Item 51 and 81 are received and filed. Hanseos recibidos han sido archivados. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there are 12 council members present now. Do you wish to take up the ordinances, which would be 2, 3, 4, 5, and 11?
Let's take those ordinances now, colleagues. With 12 members present, we can dispense with ordinances on the first reading, unless there's any discussion or debate. Items 1 through 5, 10, and 11, with the exception of those items that have been continued. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 eyes. Ordnances are approved. And Mr. LaBonge moves reconsideration of item 13. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 eyes. Item 13 is reconsidered and called special by Mr. LaBonge. Next item, please.
And going back to the items called special, the first item would be item number 13, and that was called special by council member LaBonge.
Mr. LaBonge, item 13.
Just again, members, good day, Mr. President. How are you? Sorry, I missed the pledge of allegiance, but it's the first day of school for my young son, Charles. Had to get the orientation again. But the Toberman House in Hollywood is something very much worth saving. And we talk all the time about saving structures. This house has great history. There is a groundswell of community support for this, and this to let you know. And I may want to ask the chairman of neighborhoods to speak on that. But it has an impact from the neighborhood council of this particular area, the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, which I think is very important, as you see. And I want to thank the city clerk and all the city clerk staff, Mr. Carey, for their work on that neighborhood impact. And when the neighborhood council gets an opportunity to voice their concerns, so the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council strongly supports this. The Hollywood Heritage community strongly supports this Los Angeles Conservancy, and the Council of the Fourth District strongly supports this to find a way to make this a possibility. I thank you, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I rise in support of my colleague, Tom LaBonge, in supporting the cultural historic designation of Toberman House. But I wanted to, again, not pass up the opportunity to all my members to look at your agenda today. Item 13 has the fiscal impact of what this means. But right below it, it has community impact statement. And we have a transmittal from the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council telling us how they feel about this issue, how they would like to see us vote. And members, someday this will be old news. Someday this will be passe. Someday we won't even make note. But do you realize how far we've come in this city? That no longer do we make decisions down here at City Hall without having first heard from the community that our decisions will impact the communities. And here before us today, it's a community impact statement. We cannot say that we have not heard from the community. We cannot say that they didn't make their way down to City Hall today and come speak under public comment. It doesn't matter. They have transmitted to us their issues, their concerns, and how they feel, their support, and what they are feeling. I still think this is exciting. I still think this proves that it is indeed a new day in the government. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on item 13? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That once again is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 37 called special by council member Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Is the CAO here? Morning.
Buenos días.
Your button, please, Mr. Smith.
Have a couple questions regarding this item. And it goes back to a discussion we had about a month ago here in a motion I introduced dealing with salary disparity between city units and DWP. Does this create more salary disparity between those units that we've talked about here before? Or is this somehow just equalized?
This is basically the same amendment that you considered a couple of weeks ago. However, this particular item was pulled back because it was packaged with another item. It was included in a package with another issue. And the differential, the difference, and it had to be redone because the piece of it was not technically correct. But this is really the same, technically, but this is the group of classifications that we talked about last month.
The same problem I had last month. Now, in relation to that, I have a motion that I've since introduced, asking us to come back with a report on this problem that we're seeing. And that is the classification of employees differential between the city units and DWP, as well as the monetary issues that exist between them.
So my point is, council members, now, we have a motion in to look at this. I said a month ago, and Mr. LaBonge and others said, oh, it's only 28 employees. It's no big deal. Let's do it. I say, we're nickel and diming the city to death. It's going against our policy. Here's 12 more. It's now 40. Next month, you're going to come in with another dozen and another dozen. How long are we going to continue to allow DWP to steal city employees to go there for higher pay because we allow these kind of things to go on? It's time we stand up to the policy this council set two years ago and just say, stop it until the motion I introduce. Let's just come back and analyze what's going on. We can't afford to be losing employees when we got a hard employee, freeze. We can't hire people to replace them. And very important technical units that keep going to DWP for higher pay because they can afford to play that game when we can't. How long are we going to allow DWP to raid our city? Permitaremos a DWP que que? Because we keep doing this. It was 28 last month. It's 12 this. By the end of the year, we're going to have another 100 employees. We cannot replace them because we keep doing this. We need to stop. But continue us haciendo esto. This should be the par.
Other members wishing to be heard on item 37? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
...el mapa debe de reflejar que es un camino de 20 pies, no de 10 pies, etcétera, etcétera. Me acaban de entregar las 97 condiciones, una nueva pasada, todos los concejales quiero hablar sobre lo muy breve. Hay diferentes caminos, hay varios caminos que no han sido incluidos en el mapa y un camino que pasa sobre el otro 39. Está el camino de atrás, hay asuntos de planificación que no han sido resueltos. Hay condiciones de construcción que no han sido aprobadas, son condiciones que ciertas condiciones pueden ser resueltas después. Si esos no se han llevado como basado en la ley de subvisión del mapa, que está claro con un mapa escrito en el Consejo Municipal. Ciertas cosas tienen que estar incluidas en ese mapa, yo siento que eso no ha sido incluido. También hay una condición que trata sobre lotes de espacio abierto, trata con el hecho de que tienen que dedicar estos lotes al Conservancy. Aunque yo encontré una resolución en abril de 2003 donde ha habido una oferta al Conservancy. Yo soy una entabladora, tiene 24 acres, cuando el nombre ya está en el mapa, tiene aproximadamente 30, 31 acres de espacio abierto. Es un asunto que nos gustaría hablar. Habla acerca del diseño de los caminos, mira lo que adoptó el Consejo Municipal en 1997. La condición S3, que para mí menciona que hay un camino en la parte 3 de la Tunacáñon hasta el desarrollo. Ya la acerca del camino, este de 28 pies, la razón para la cual ha producido 28 pies es porque iba a impactar la casa de alguien. Y las mejoras también en este camino. Tenemos este último mapa que se muestra que este camino de 40 pies está teniendo impacto en esta casa. Esto fue parte de una petición, ese fue proyecto del Consejo Municipal, que el Consejo se aprobó también. Hay caminos, esto es un área de caballos, hay caminos que tienen ciertas condiciones, 97, y otro en la calle Leches, no está en el mapa final. Señora tiene que terminar, por favor. Ya me gusta mirando la ley de subvisión, la ley de mapa. Y nuevamente quiero decir, esto no es un mapamap. También en la agenda del Consejo, habla de algún tipo de acuerdo, que es parte de la aprobación el día de hoy. Me gustaría ver una copia de esta aprobación, un acuerdo de esta aprobación. Muchas gracias. Se termina el comentario del público sobre el asunto 107. Señora Gru.
Okay ma'am, if I can ask you to submit a speaker card please, otherwise we don't know when you're wanting to speak.
Presiono la tarjeta.
But go ahead and speak now and then submit the speaker card when you're done.
Sabremos cuando quiero hablar, por favor. Mi nombre es Ruth Frye, y éramos parte de la demanda y la apelación que estaba llevando a cabo. Y luchamos por dos años para que esto fuera breve, si iban a construir, que fuera construido por las normas adecuadas que parece ustedes reconocen ahora. Parte de esta apelación llegó aquí al Consejo Municipal, si a 50 hogares o 34 casas. Ciertos miembros del Consejo Municipal nos acercaron. Sigo comentando también, siento que nos trataba de acuerdos, el acuerdo fue, llego en acuerdo con las 50 casas en condiciones, con las 84 casas con estas condiciones. Y se votó sobre esto y decidimos solamente el abogado tomar las 34 casas y así diciendo seguro que íbamos a lograr estas condiciones, llegamos a un acuerdo. Lo que ciertas condiciones fueron ignoradas, por tanto estoy pidiendo que por favor piensen sobre lo que están haciendo esto. El tiempo de este mapa ya se ha vencido y aún no han logrado esas condiciones. Quiero ser honesto, porque eso hizo buena fe y todo estaba documentado, se votó sobre esto y ahora no está incluido, gracias.
Thank you very much, this concludes public comments for item 107, turning now to council discussion, Ms. Gru.
Señora Gru. Muchas gracias, presidente, me gustaría tener un personal que pase la percutaria y la planificación. Staff, I know that, you know, I would like to deny this track map if I can, and I want to ask some questions here. If you could just give a brief history of this case, litigation and settlement. Also, como ustedes saben, encontramos cuatro defectos en el último mapa. Si ustedes también pueden darme nuestras opciones relativas a estos defectos. Y si por hecho podemos dejar este mapamap basado en esos cuatro defectos. Si podemos empezar con eso.
Proceder así.
Jerry Burge City Trains Office, this site is the subject of a past lawsuit way back in 1994. The city did settle by approving a 34 lot subdivision instead of a 50 lot subdivision. As part of that settlement, there were many conditions attached and the usual subdivision map act time limits apply. Now it came time to clear those conditions and to file a final map. Under the map act, a map is timely, is deemed a timely filing for purposes of the map act once delivered to the engineer. The engineer has determined that this map has been timely filed, that all the conditions were met and it was appropriate for filing for final. The city trains office believes that is a defensible position to say otherwise, we believe would subject the city to liability. However, I think that the city council does have the authority for the very minor issues that are left. And I think engineering has found that there are minor, minor technicalities that haven't been complied with. That you can instruct an engineer not to release this for recording until those conditions have been completely satisfied.
Pero para que esté hecho, hasta que estas condiciones sean satisfactorias, por ejemplo, que Ruth y Marianne mencionaron, las estipulaciones, se fue aprobado por el Consejo Municipal previamente. Esas condiciones están incluidas, no están mostradas en este mapa y cómo sea la diferencia, quiero pedirle al ingeniero de la ciudad.
One of the conditions is for them to provide the equestrian trail dedication. A portion of that is not shown on the final map that the applicant submitted. But this is something that can be fixed and can be taken care of before the map is actually recorded. So that is one item that can be corrected.
Okay, I guess the question would be if there's that, I know there are four particular items that have, that there were defects in the map.
Hay defectos en este mapa, conectar el camino de 831 hasta el final, la locación, nos ha ido completando, con la cantera de los conserves. Los caminos con el led, ciertos caminos no están incluidos, hay ciertas medidas incorrectas. Así que, seguro, yo sé que, otros asuntos que similarmente excluyeron nuestro proceso de protesta. Pero eso es una opción, porque se luchó arduamente antes de hablar de esto, el Consejo Municipal propuso, pero no, quiero probar este asunto. Colleagues, este es un, mucho que no, está en acuerdo con la ordenanza de, la baja de 50 pies, pero los manos ya están atrás. Porque este proyecto empezó en el, empezó en los principios de los 80. Y yo sé que el concejal Wax, su intención era que este estaria, quería que se fuese, estuviera bajo la regulación de 15 lotes. Sin embargo, se plantea todas estas condiciones basándose en esto, es un proyecto de subdivisión muy grande, la Tunacáñon. Yo también he mencionado esto, y se ha roto mucho con los lugares de caballos, y Tony Carter también mencionaba con esta área. Estamos que no hay otros asuntos, sino otros asuntos que no nos hemos, que no hemos incluido. Y es que puede incluir en este mapa, y profesión, y la manera de no probar este mapa, y yo sí que te dije los comentarios.
As far as the trail along ledge, the condition required them to construct a trail. So normally for improvement requirements, they will not be actually shown on the final map. So maybe that's the reason, there's a confusion on two of the deficiencies that you mentioned. That the trail are not actually shown on the map. Because the trails are supposed to be built within the public street easement area. There won't be additional dedication, that's why they are not shown on the final map. Y estos son los trail along ledge. So that, I think there are two of the issues that you mentioned.
Eso es, eso es lo que también menciono ahí, lo ancho de este. Lo que en particular muestra que lo ancho es diferente, que si este incluye esto, de camino real. Este lo que nos preocupa es que si el mapa no incluye todas esas condiciones, si no incluye, tener un camino ahí podemos probar el mapa y luego el. Camino no correr en futuro, quizás es un problema, pero me parece que si haya querido tener un camino de caballos, entonces que el mapa final incluya este camino.
Along the ledge, the trail on ledge, the developer has put up a bond to guarantee the construction of the trail. And if they do not do it, then the city can use the money and actually construct it ourselves. So they have provided a guarantee to do that, the trail along ledge. And we, the city, we do have the necessary dedication to put in the road itself as well as the trail.
Y también este camino para los caballos, y cuál es la diferencia entre lo ancho de 28 y 40, cuál tiene un impacto en las casas cercanas.
The existing street has a 40-foot total width, dedication width. And 28 feet of that will be used to construct a road. And the remaining 12 feet would be used for the trail. So the trail will be put into the remaining 12-foot area. And their requirement is to construct a 10-foot trail.
Y esto es para construir un camino de caballos de 12 pies. Lo que puedo decir es que cuando nos reunimos, ciertos asuntos fueron presentados, estamos buscando, tratando encontrar la mejor manera de resolver este problema.
There is a, an equestrian trail, as Edmund you mentioned, that's supposed to go on the south side of Lot 39 and then connect with another trail. And I think our concern there was that when it is shown, assuming it can be corrected through this technical effort. When it is shown, it's not a trail that goes perpendicular to the contour lines, which would make it impassable for users. But that it's shown in such a way that it makes a logical, ultimate equestrian and hiking trail up the slope connecting to the main trail. So, finally, it's a usable trail. And not one that looks good on paper but doesn't work for riders.
I want one quick question on the 28 versus the 40. My understanding is that it's 28 feet for the street and it was 10 feet for the trail, so that would be 38 feet.
That's how the condition reads, that is correct.
And to their map shows 40, and again.
Was it two feet?
Yes, and, and, and again, for this neighborhood, that two feet means a lot relative to how it's going to be designed.
Let me speculate for a moment, or do you know Edmund?
At this time, I really don't know how the two feet would make the difference. But as far as putting in the trail and the road, the city has the easement to do it. So if later on, if the city can work out something and make the trail wider, maybe there's still dedication for that to take place. But the condition only requires the developer to guarantee a 10-foot trail.
I'll amplify slightly on this, if I may.
Sure, please.
The city engineer's standard for equestrian trails is 12 feet.
El camino de caballos es de 12 pies. El camino de caballos tienen una cerca que pasa ambos lados para propósito de seguridad, y está en curva, y lo que queda es un camino con un pasaje claro de 10 pies. Por tanto, no sé si el ingeniero de la ciudad está considerando esto, un camino que como le está cerca y al fin resulta en un.
He is right in that this 40-foot feet that's shown here is the total designation or dedication of the public right of way. And then within that right of way, there are these different pieces. 28 feet will be the roadway. And then, I would venture that 10 or 12 feet would be the area set aside as publicly dedicated equestrian hiking trail.
Un camino para los que montan caballos y para otros lugares recreacionales. Me gustaría que la fiscalidad me diga que yo no tengo que probar esto, y el ingeniero, y el departamento de planificación, que son proyectos de efectos, y creo que hay ciertos asuntos de condiciones tocantes a un mapa final. Y yo hablé con ese trabajo, con mi concejal, en Reyes, para pasar eso hacia alguien más, aunque desee hablar, sí, y regresar esto en un minuto.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Ms. Mysikowski.
Yes, I just wanted to support my colleague in this endeavor.
Señor Reyes, de un punto de vista del tiempo que ha pasado.
The city attorney, I have a question for you. What are our timeframes in making a decision in this case?
Tengo una pregunta, qué tiempo tenemos para llegar a una decisión, cuáles son sus límites, este es el último día para te darme una acción bajo ley estatal, si la ciudad no actúa sobre esto. Entonces esto va a ser considerado como a promanto si votamos en contra de aprobar esto.
What's the city's exposure at that point, or is there?
En qué posición nos ponemos legalmente, en cuanto a la ciudad, esto siempre es difícil contestar en una sesión abierta.
Always reluctant to be exhibit one in the lawsuit, as I'd say. But just that, in light of the fact that there's previous litigation on this, in light of the fact that the engineer has determined that it's a time of filing. In light of the fact that the conditions that are left are of a technical nature. And there could be a big debate on whether or not, as to how you would comply with the condition, meaning the conditions are not completely clear. I think our exposure could be high.
So the technical issues and the specification that my council colleague, Senator Gruel is asking. Are those the kinds of actions we can give right now, or is that something we can offer the council office to look at?
Que puede ofrecer, que consideren, que se pongan, se sientan. Lo que tiene propuesto bajo ley estatal, la ley indica que. Acciones siguientes de la agencia local incluyendo pero no limitados a procesar, aprobar y archivar. Puede ocurrir legalmente después de la fecha de vencimiento del mapa, la pregunta sería, ¿sí o no?, ¿ese tipo de acción? Es el procesamiento del mapa, que pueden decirse que es así, que podemos continuar trabajando. Con la subdivisión, pedirle al subdividor que cumpla esas condiciones siempre cuando sea una interpretación racional de la condición. Siempre cuando tengamos el verbaje, el lugar que anticipa estos cambios, basando en acuerdos que ya habían estado establecidos, que fueron excluidos. Esto nos da una oportunidad para que los concejales, si desean llegar ahí, para llegar a una decisión actual, y ser bastante claros en las condiciones, sí, así es. Tenemos que el ingeniero puede pedir y poder requerir al subdividor que cumpla estas modificaciones técnicas de las condiciones. Una vez es difícil, yo estaba simplemente cuando estamos decidiendo un lugar aquí, decimos la destino de un pie, de una propiedad, y tenemos el impacto. Y estamos llegando a estas decisiones ahora, y esto no es injusto, pero es muy incómodo, sin saber, los impactos en ambas partes. Claro, el subdor puede presentar un argumento que puede ser considerado como prueba de la manera que fue entregado. Al ingenieros podrán hacer este argumento, nosotros prestaríamos el argumento que estas son actividades siguientes y que aún podemos requerirlas. Entonces esto nos llevará a otra.
Ms. Mysikowski.
La etapa de negociación, la idea que el señor Reyes y la señora Cruz han presentado es de agregar una moción. Que si esto no se archiva, las situaciones también causan, el ingeniero municipal de ir al subdividor y hacer estas correcciones técnicas. Y mostramos, lo que está haciendo el lado otro, lo otro, el ingeniero y planificación, porque no pueden mostrar todas las condiciones que eran parte de la regla de litigio y la promoción final de la apelación del mapa. Tentativo que está en lugares, esto está en lugar tal como lo dirigió el Consejo Municipal, no.
No, except for the dedication of the equestrian trail, that is part of the condition.
But I thought you said the dedication, the improvement of the trail is supposed to be in the 40-foot dedication, other than this one on Lot 39.
That's correct, thanks, Ms. Mysikowski.
So you will get that as a correction and show it through Lot 39. The other thing I would like to say, I think Emily answered it well. That although the 10-foot improvement of a trail, by allowing it to be within a 12-foot remainder of a 40-foot dedication minus the 28-foot street. The important condition there from the community's perspective is one, that it is absolutely strictly limited to 28-foot street width and not any wider. And that's the condition, and I suppose that's to be subject to the approval of the city engineer as well as the trail. So the further control both by the city engineer, city planning and the council office. Is that the final design, you right now have a condition saying that it is mandated, a bond saying it is to be paid for and the bond is a guarantee.
Dice que es una garantía, pero la condición final que se hace, indica que se mejora también, se lleva a cabo bajo estas especificaciones, es objeto la promoción del ingeniero de la ciudad y la planificación de la ciudad. Y de la oficina del consejo, que todavía se debe ser aprobado antes de ser probado finalmente. Entonces esta mejora de 38 pies no va a ser aprobado hasta que el ingeniero municipal regrese, que al llegar a estar en la condición, que la oficina del consejo sea parte, a la promoción final de que se apruebe en cuanto a técnicas de.
But the technical, but that you're satisfied that you're satisfied that you're within the 40-foot dedication as it meanders within that 2-foot stretch. And sometimes it's important to have the two feet, not only for the rails, but sometimes you have a tree that you can save. If you've got a little bit of room to maneuver and you sometimes also don't like just straight away. You like a little bit of particular trails, a little bit more meandering. So if.
Puedes llevar un algo, poder decirlo, construirlo, puede ir un poquito de eso, y en este tipo de caminos creo que un camino derecho no es, muchas veces se opta hacer algo un poquito más.
On Lot 39, but also then subject those improvements under the conditions as they're now written.
Modificaciones, ahora estas condiciones de ser incluidas y que esas condiciones sean resueltas antes de que se apruebe esto finalmente también, señora Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you both Ms. Reyes and Ms. Mysikowski and all of you who know how important this particular community and this project is to me.
Este proyecto es para lo que, para nosotros una última pregunta, y es esta. El acuerdo de la mejora de subdivisión, esto está incluido en la agenda. El acuerdo de la mejora de subdivisión, puede describir lo que se está básicamente, la ciudad está hablando sobre un acuerdo con la compañía de construcción. Y esta compañía tendrá hasta dos años de esta mejoración, entonces la ciudad puede tomar el bono.
So basically, this is an agreement between the city and the developer. The developer is putting up the guarantee for that.
Esta es una garantía para esto, colegas, si me permiten, me gustaría negar este mapa en particular, pero me han aconsejado que esto es algo que no podemos hacer, sin. Una posibilidad de litigio, sin embargo, ciertos puntos que se han mencionado por mi miembros de comunidad, por su reacción, que nos llevan a cambiar esto. Esto es que ningún mapa será probado final, no final. The record of the recognition of the map would occur until the conditions met in the lawsuit and the motion that the council member Wax approved, I think it was 1995. That unless all of those conditions are met and the technical corrections that have been identified that were not included in the final track map be completed. Que esto sea completado, que este mapa no se archiva, no ocurrirá hasta que todos estos se hayan cumplido y si no, cumplen esto, entonces no, podremos no archivar el mapa. Estamos haciendo estas grandes condiciones y de nuevo. Yo creo que mi proyecto, supongo que nuestros colegas también sentirán el mismo, porque esto es un mapa, no el mapa, el mapa final incluye condiciones que fueron requeridas para hacer otra acción. Entonces esto procede y pedimos, entonces, en condiciones que debieron de haber sido cumplidas e incluidas, creo que es seguro decir que si no archivamos el mapa, la pregunta será contestada en litigio. Pero yo creo que una posición muy fuerte que tiene este punto, entre el acuerdo de la demanda del Consejo Municipal, que fue la acción de lector, que hemos enviado un mensaje muy claro. Hoy estamos dispuestos a tomar ese riesgo litigio porque le hemos hecho lo posible dentro de las leyes en cuanto a lo que. Es entendimiento, yo sé que es muy complicado, yo, yo sería que eso no fuera adelante, y gracias por todos sus esfuerzos y tiempo, y las demandas de todo lo que hemos pasado para atrás de. Creo que se ha dado cambios, pero pido cambiar este mapa, estas condiciones, estas condiciones que acabe de identificar. Supongo que alguien más me podía dar sobre esto, sí, así es.
Thank you, Ms. Gru, has asked a question to be heard.
Algo otro miembro que si hace algo más.
This thing, Mr. Padilla, in my last 30 seconds, I would like to work with you, Councilwoman Reyes, maybe Mrs. Mysikowski, as well to look at this example of how conditions are not included in a final track map. And if there are ways, obviously with staff, a way to change that in the future. Because we don't want to be in this position again, where we would have to have a lawsuit to include those final important conditions.
Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Ms. Gru, colleagues, you have a motion on the table.
Gracias, señora Cruz, tenemos una moción, pendientes, diálogo adicional.
Seeing none, Madam Crook, please open the roll on Ms. Gru's motion.
La moción de la señora Cruz.
Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14, sí.
Motion carries. That is approved.
Ha sido aprobado, procedamos, por favor. Asunto número 85 fue que tu concejal, concejal, señor Cárdenas.
Unless your questions have been answered, okay, we're ready for a vote on 85.
Sobre 85.
Madam Crook, please open the roll.
Cierre the vote.
Tabulate the vote.
14, sí, ha sido aprobado.
Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And seeing no requests from the public to address the council during public comment period for today, public comment is closed. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Han requests to be excused September 9th and September 16th, 17th and 19th for city business. A motion is required on the excuse for September 9th.
Mr. Lavange moves, Ms. Han is excused. Next step.
And that closes the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues, are there any announcements today? Mr. Lavange.
I announced it today in many parts of Los Angeles, it's the first day of school. And to remind all of us, that Councilman Weiss had that great idea last year about the program of drop-off and safety around schools, which we've adopted and taking care of. Trying to help parents volunteer at the curbside in the early mornings because around the congestion of schools is so great. So I just wanted to remind ourselves of that and our staff to go out to our elementary schools in this afternoon. And Wendy, I don't know if you're available, it's after 1 o'clock, the mayor will be in the East San Fernando Valley with the superintendent of the schools to break ground on a new high school, which I think is positive there. On the end of the metro line there in North Hollywood, which is a positive event. And I just want to say it's good to be back with all of you and back at the city's work.
Welcome back. Other announcements today, Mr. Cárdenas.
Yeah, I'd just like to also acknowledge that, hopefully with the construction of many, many new schools throughout Los Angeles. This will truly be, September being the first day of school for our children. For example, in my district, I think all but two or three schools are not on traditional calendars. That means they're year-round, they're overcrowded, they don't have enough space for classrooms, they don't have enough space for the children to play. Those are not the kind of conditions that are conducive to our children. And the reason why I bring this up on the city council level is because it's up to us to make sure that we cooperate with our school district to make sure that we can streamline that process. So they can build those schools and so they can make our environment better for our children. So that we can all get back to all saying it's now the first week of school for all of our children in Los Angeles, not just a small bracket.
Thank you, Mr. Cárdenas, other announcements? If not, do we have adjourned motions today? Any adjourned motions? Please rise. Adjourned motions, Mr. Lavange.
Señor Lavange.
Mike Rubenfeld passed away recently. He's a longtime Democratic activist, was on the executive board of the Democratic Party in the San Fernando Valley. He was a committed volunteer with expertise in coordinating voter registration drives. He survived by his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Dale Robbins. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mike Rubenfeld at this time. In addition, members, Jane Pondexter Matthews passed away last week. Her husband Frank, sons Jefferson, Nathaniel, and parents Edward and Dorothy Poindexter.
During this period of time where she was helping, she found, word got to her that her younger sister had been murdered in New Jersey. And I wanted to just say a couple of things about her, even though she is not from Los Angeles, clearly Dominique is somebody who's made a real mark on Los Angeles. Shawnee Isis Maketa Jones Baraka, Dominique De Prima's younger sister, she was killed on August 12th in New Jersey. Very tragic circumstances, she was found shot to death in the home of her sister in apparent act of domestic violence. Noted both Dominique and Shawnee, their father is the great poet Amira Baraka. And she was only 31 years old. What made this particularly touching for a lot of us was that what Shawnee has been known for, and it's my understanding that 3,000 people turned out for her funeral in Newark. She was a coach, a basketball coach, and she spent her days as an assistant high school basketball coach in New York, New Jersey for the Malcolm X Shabbos High School Lady Bulldogs. And they had just won their tournament of champions, the state tournament of champions just a couple months prior to that. And so all the families and students and kids came out to share in a great loss. And so I ask that we adjourn in memory of Shawnee Isis Maketa Jones Baraka.
Other tributes? Any other tributes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Señor consejero municipal, tome lista. Se levanta la sesión.
Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.